Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to Thurston County Board of County Commissioners. Commissioners check in for Wednesday, March 19th, 2025. It's 1:04 PM. My name is Time Answer Chair of the Board, Vice Chair Commissioner Warren Fornier, Commissioner Emily Claus, Commissioner Mahia will be right down. Went to grab a computer. And Commissioner Grant, present. We have public virtual attendance for this at the YouTube channel. And written public comment may be received up to two hours in advance of this meeting and would be distributed to Board of County Commissioners. Action may be taken at this meeting. We have a couple items. Reports on external boards and commissions first, which is a standing item for Commissioners check in. And Commissioner Grant, did you have any external board reports you wanted to make?
No, I think we just went over them yesterday, so not much on my end.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Claus?
I don't have anything since yesterday.
Commissioner Mahia?
Yeah. Can you skip to Wayne first?
Sure. I had a couple, if you need. Right, Commissioner Fornier, anything?
The only meeting I've had since I gave an update on all my meetings yesterday was the Fire Commissioners Association met last night. It's a wonderful group to meet with. They mostly spent their time getting a presentation from Director Wendy Hill from TCOM, which she kind of gave an update on what TCOM's going through. Their staffing, status, kind of the state of the calls that they're receiving and how that's changed somewhat. There actually, I think it was something, there was this, I don't remember the exact number, but they actually have decreased the number of calls from year to year, which is odd. Couldn't really identify how or where that's happening. Because then they went on to subsequent reports where it said that we've had more calls for law, we've had more calls for fire. There was a spot where like there's less ALS calls going out, but more BLS calls. But by and large, there are less 911 calls coming in from year to year. They talked about integrating with 988 and how that's an ongoing discussion. Because they're kind of in two different camps, but there are some public service answering points or systems throughout the state that are trying to integrate 911 and 988, and they're seeing some success. So yeah, RTCOM takes a pretty conservative approach to new technologies and taking on new tasks, which I think is wise because it's a really important, critical system. And so moving slow is important and making sure that you're not undoing something that's tried and true. So I think TCOM does a good job. Director Wendy Hill does a good job. And it was an overall good report that I'm sure we could ask for to come before us if anyone's interested.
Any questions for Commissioner Fornier? Okay, I will report on a couple of things. At the Mayor's Forum, there was a discussion led by Mayor Ryder and Lacy about trying to do more to coordinate. So the way we coordinate our regional legislative priorities at the state level, he wants to take that to the federal level. Because he doesn't think that we do that very much. And so with us sort of revamping our efforts to have a federal, you know, I mean, I can't remember where we left that, but didn't we authorize moving forward with a new RFP or a new effort? And so that may be some, maybe that person could take the lead in working with our partners too. I don't want to overstep. I didn't say anything. I just sort of noted that this was a desire and seemed like a big priority for Andy.
Yeah, I talked to Andy about it. He was suggesting we use like TRPC potentially as the convener. I think that's maybe something to suss out and talk about. But you know, for the most part, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, okay. I mean, yeah, it fits all the other things, reasons we talked about, why we do things, why we do them. So I said that we definitely want to talk more about that. I mentioned the thing that we may be doing, that we should be doing here on April 30th at the atrium, like an elected officials, fifth Wednesday type thing. Let folks know what that was about. There seemed to be interest and a lot of interest there for coming and participating. Office of Public Defense Community Advisory Committee. I know everybody's worried about the case lit standards or interested in them. And since I hadn't heard anything, the latest I heard from Larry Jefferson, the OPD Director, and this was last Thursday morning, was that the Supreme Court, he felt like the Supreme Court was kind of waiting to see what the ledge shaver was going to do and back and forth. But their line is that they're, they want more information on a couple of different areas and they're actively working to collect that information and actively working to a decision. So even though they didn't say when they were going to have that decision, they were also not saying that we're tableing this for a year or anything. Like, he does expect there to be a decision in the next, you know, couple months or something like that, depending on, you know.
Have an update from the Supreme Court.
Okay, well, you can, that was what Larry Jefferson said at the OPD meeting. So finally, lot, I just thought it might be of interest that we have an affordable housing program. And it's 120 for each biennium, we allot $500,000, $125,000 per jurisdiction with a shared pool. And, you know, the county's not in that, but the shared pool was requested to be used for Franz Anderson. And what it does is it cuts connection fees by 50% for low income and affordable housing. Since that seemed like a good use of the shared pool, because that truly was a shared project across the board. So that was approved by the lot board. $125,000 credit toward reducing the cost of connection fees for the Franz Anderson project. So I know that, we've talked about that project so many times that I just wanted you guys to figure.
Suggestion that Andy made came after his NLC trip. So, you know, which the NLC trip came on the piggyback of the NACO trip. So when he was meeting with some of the legislators, that was, I think, something that was suggested to him as well, to help them better advocate for us, was to make sure we were all on the same page. And so the fact that it came from them saying, hey, Thurston County, you know, not get your act together, but you know, the better you can get everybody on the same page, the better they can work on our behalf.
Yeah, that's what Andy, that's right. Commissioner Mahia?
Thank you. So I'll give, have two major updates. I'll give like a breakdown, I guess, of NACO that I said I would do today. I want to start off by thanking staff for the one pager provided. This was something that I requested last year after the NACO Legislative Conference. And the Board was supportive of this approach and they gave the thumbs up for this to be done. So it was great to have something during our meeting. So thank you so much Leonard and Amy, and I believe Ellen worked on it, or Stacy. Stacy. So Stacy and Amy and Leonard, thank you so much for providing that. And also want to thank Taylor and Matt for printing it out and putting it together for.
They said we had the best folders.
Yeah, they were a big success with our congressional delegates and their staff and, you know.
Yeah, like, and somebody was like, we need like a seal on the outside. We don't have a seal. We don't have, and so like, what did you, somebody came up with like this embossed sticker to put on them and they loved them. They were impressed.
So, yeah, no, it was, they were a huge success. And even though she's not from our congressional delegation, Representative, Congresswoman Emily Randall had our Thurston County pin in our picture. So, you know, that was, it was really great. So just huge thanks to staff for that. It was again, something that I saw other counties had and were prepared with a one pager for the congressional delegates. And I was just like, no, that is something that we really need to do. And thank you for the Board for supporting that request last year. So I'll start with kind of things at the actual conference. I won't, so Saturdays are committee days. And so there were several resolutions I was a part of and involved with. So a lot of my day was going to, from committee to committee to pass those resolutions. I just want to let everyone know that I was approached by President Gore to apply for an open seat for the Board of Directors. And so I have submitted that application. I'm not sure how many people are going to submit it, but I was.
What is the position?
It's for the Board of Directors for the National Association of Counties. So I have submitted it, but I'm sure it's going to be very competitive. So I'm not sure, but I wanted to let the Board know that that is in process.
Will we get to vote for you?
I don't think so. I think it's a presidential appointment thing, yeah. I think he's the one that appoints.
The President of NACO?
Yeah.
Appoints the Board?
Well, they appoint some of the Board members. They have their own. I think it's like committee presidents are on the Board of, and then states got some representatives on there as well. And so for Washington State, it's currently Commissioner Janiky and Commissioner Cuny. So Sunday was session day, so attended a variety of sessions. Things that wanted to report on, there was a lot of concerns from counties on the municipal bonds issue. I have sent this information over to Leonard. So municipal bonds are currently tax exempt. And so at a cost estimated at $300 billion over 10 years for Congress. So counties have just under $4 trillion of municipal bonds outstanding that are sustaining our local infrastructure nationwide. So this means that if Congress were to do away with this, it would increase borrowing costs starting at 2%, which of course reduces how far the money that we borrow can stretch. So basically with projects, we would have to assume a 20% reduction in overall funds. And so of course, as we have bonds out, we're trying to get future bonds out. And, you know, that is definitely something of concern that would affect us too. I think the message NACO said that we're trying to get across is that for every dollar the federal government is foregoing for this, counties are getting twice as much in savings. And so if you hear anything about it, municipal bonds and kind of that cost, wanted to give everyone a heads up that it is something that is, it is of concern at the national level as well.
Is there a bill in Congress? Is that the idea?
Yeah, there is a bill in Congress trying to, and I do not have that information. A lot of the conversations this year were around immigration and risk management and trying to get a clear view of impacts of current regulations and how they're affecting counties. So those were kind of like, there were sounding messages that were, a lot of these sessions were formed upon. And so it was, it was an interesting session, I believe. And one of the things from all of our congressional visits was that there is an obvious gap in communication from the Legislative Congress and the executive branch. And a lot of them were unsure, but the main suggestion was that if funding for grants already approved are stopped to let them know. And that this is happening quite a bit. So for example, the University of Washington had one of, some of their grants stopped because they had the word transition in one of their scientific documents. And so, you know, of course, that's impacting their funding and they had to, it had nothing to do with.
I read an article about that and like woman is on the list. So if you want to talk about a woman or study a woman, you are at risk for violating federal policy. You know, they were telling us about trauma surgeons losing their jobs because the word trauma is in the title at VA hospitals across the country.
Yeah, and so that's, it's happening quite a bit all over. It's already happening here in the state. And so basically the message that we got is if that happens, please let your congressional delegates know. And so.
There is, I mean, as stupid as it all is, honestly, that there is a process. If it's flagged with the word, then it has to be examined by the, someone Department of Justice, I can't remember what group it is, looks at it to see if it was actually used in the context that they're trying to.
Oh, really?
Yeah, like, so if they see that you said woman, but it's not about DEI or helping women equality or anything that, you know, like that, that the federal government doesn't believe is valid use of taxpayer resources, then they can go ahead and override the flag and approve the thing. But it has to be, if the use of the word triggers a vetting by some federal authority committee.
Yeah.
So people should at least be aware. If they get flagged, like, they're probably going to have to go through this kind of absurd, ridiculous, surreal process.
Yeah, but our congressional delegates did ask that if that does happen to let them know. Another thing that we did talk about that wasn't on our list, but it's something that we learned about, right as, you know, it has been the DOJ decision and the mandate for methadone? Sorry, methadone. And they wanted to kind of get some information on that. So we told them kind of how the process started.
Do you recall that jail discussion that we had, where we were going to have to start providing methadone within like 24 hours?
That was from the sheriff.
Yeah, there was a Department of Justice like decision for Mason County. And then it was going to trickle down to our county, like because we were in adjacent counties. So let's take a look at Thurston County. And then them trying to scramble to figure out what that meant and how to meet that need. That's not related to that other issue we were doing, I don't mean to get off track of your report, but that other issue where we were trying to participate in a program and there were different phasings, if the jail could meet certain current parameters. Anyway, that's a different topic. We haven't, I'd like to hear an update on that.
So yeah, so let the sheriff know if they could gather that information and they just sent it. So, yeah, so let the sheriff know if they could gather that information and they just sent it yesterday. So we'll be distributing that information to our congressional delegates. So FIFA did have a session and it was interesting, right? Because I felt like, you know, we hadn't received the book and like, I was like, what is going on? But a lot of the hosting locations also hadn't heard from FIFA and there was a lot of frustration all across. And so there is still a need for 60 base camp locations in Western US. And so I did speak with the delegates after that and I'm hoping that there is more to follow. And they are doing a $600 million request for security, security needs only. And that's supposed to be stretched out for all hosting jurisdictions, which I don't think that is realistic and very low.
They were pretty hopeful that the feds would come in and provide the support because apparently during Trump's first administration, he kicked off and got, or was a part, it was during his administration when we got approved to have this round of FIFA stuff. So there's some ownership with that administration. And having it come to fruition now, they feel that there will be resources for it made available, is that?
Yeah. Yeah. And then I think the last thing I'll just, so there is preparations going on for USA 250. And that's the celebration of the quintessential.
Quintessentennial?
Yeah, there we go.
I looked at the word the other day.
So.
One I never heard before.
So there is an opportunity for kids to join in on America's field trips, which invites students in grades three to 12 to share their perspective on what America means to them. And we have sent over some of this information to local schools. But for anyone interested, the website is America250.org. So they already did like a first round of students and I didn't see anyone from Washington State. So it would be great to get kids from Washington State in this, in the second round. And basically they're, they have this whole field trip lined up with like, you know, their parent and it's free and it's just a great opportunity, I think. And they get to go through all these different excursions and, yeah. So that's for NACO. Major items that I thought would be of interest to the board. Now for the inner branch Advisory Committee. This meeting was on Friday. And so for those of you that don't know, this committee is comprised of the Supreme Court, Administrative Office of Courts, District Court, Superior Court, Office of Civil Legal Aid, Office of Public Defense, Clerks Association, Prosecutor, Governor Office reps, counties, representatives and senators.
Are you representing all of WASC?
I'm representing all of WASC on that one. And so the Supreme Court, Chief Justice Stevens did update on the public defense standards as well. And basically they said they were going through all the comments received, which were a lot. They said that there were a lot of suggestions and they're wanting to look at them very closely. The message was like they are working on it. And they said that they hope to have a decision out in the coming months. So there wasn't, yeah, so it's kind of around the same, actually, what you said, yeah. But they're hoping for something sooner. We got an update from them on their budget. And they have been asked to do another exercise cut for around $8 million. And so unfortunately, what that means for us, the Supreme Court has decided to cut into a lot of programs that fund the lower courts. So one example of that is the interpreter program that we do through District Court. And, you know, Representative Taylor and I raised concerns about how some of these cuts will impact our community directly. And another thing that we need to consider and be aware of is that, you know, we heard a little bit from Deborah on it, but the funding that we're getting from Superior Court, that, you know, they have, they said they're not putting that on the chopping block. But you never know how the, you know, with these cuts, how it goes sometimes. So it's concerning because these cuts will continue to put strain on our justice system and.
Does that money come through the Supreme Court budget?
Yeah, they are the ones who earmark it every, every year. Yeah, so the Supreme, so basically we work with Chris at AOC and AOC puts it as kind of like a this item. So every year it's, I've been piping up about like, are you sure that funding's in there? Are you sure that funding's in there? And so it was very concerning when they're like, oh, we have another $8 million cuts. And I was like, well, is our funding? And they said no, that it wasn't included in the cuts and that they're still proceeding with it. Another interesting thing to hear from that committee, it was, it's interesting, right? Because you get kind of the judicial side and then you get the legislative, like, the representatives and senators. And if there's two representatives and two senators. And the difference in opinion between the appetite at the legislative, legislative level for additional judicial officers. And there isn't really any. And so that's like, you know, there was several ticking points where things got, were getting a little heated in terms of, you know, just the need for judicial officers and the pushback on more community resources instead and investing in other places besides judicial officers. And so that's always interesting to kind of see the difference there.
Who is arguing for the judicial officers?
The judges, yeah. Yeah, Chief.
I mean Superior Court, I should say, has a rep.
Yeah, Superior Court has a rep, District Court has a rep. And Supreme Court is, you know, helping assist in kind of that conversation with Superior Court.
Interesting to poll WASC, like, how many county commissioners are getting, you know, we always, not always, we at times have heard strong opinion from our court, we need another judge. I'm sure it's similar in other counties and be curious how many county commissions are hearing that message from their judges team that they need more, they have the stats to justify more judges.
Well, I don't remember which three counties, but they're, they did announce that they were going to be making three requests for judicial officers next year from, it wasn't us, but it was for different counties. So that's always an interesting.
Legislators in.
Yeah, so. And then I kind of wanted to, so I met with a staff member from the DRC Dispute Resolution Center. And I just wanted to highlight just that I didn't know that our local DRC got chosen out of a total of 10 locations in the nation for a DOJ grant that basically gave them the tools to track hate crimes regionally. And it's apparently been like a two-year process where they've just been collecting all this data and they're about to go live on that work. And so I was pretty, I had no idea that this was even, like, a thing that was happening in our community. And it was great to kind of hear that we're only one of 10 chosen in the nation.
Are they tracking it within the state or within just Thurston County?
Within the state.
Okay, interesting.
Yeah. But that is all that I have to report.
Which, which agency was?
DRC?
Dispute Resolution, yeah.
Okay. Then let's go on to the next item, I guess. We have to, the B O C C Code of Conduct and confidentiality expectations. I'll let the county manager do a discussion or frame the issue or pass it to Maria or however you want to do it, County Manager.
I'd be happy to turn over to the subcommittee.
Or subcommittee, you guys decide. Anyone but me is my.
Talk through documents and the, and the process that they took.
Chair, Commissioner Grant was the subcommittee's associate partner.
I'm not in the best space right now to be able to do this. So I've been, I've kind of had to move around today because I keep getting moved out of rooms. Let me go see if I can move rooms again and then I could, I could probably leave this.
Okay, take your, take your time.
Are you able to?
Well, she wants to.
She's unable to?
No, she's about to move rooms.
Yeah, I was going to say, if, I mean, if you want to, Carolina, go for it. But I will move rooms because I, I'll try to, so I can at least talk.
I think we can wait until you move and then we can pick it up. Do you want to at least highlight the documents that were in our packages?
Yeah, sure. So highlighting the documents that are in the packet, we have the Code of Conduct. There were a significant amount of changes. So what you'll see is a just complete revised draft. A lot of the content is, is conceptually still there, they just put it in a little bit different format. And then we have the Board of County Commissioners Confidential Expectations. This has the blue line on it. In addition, we have comments that we've received bad from Commissioner Klaus, thank you so much. Really appreciate your work reviewing it. And Commissioner Mensah, thank you so much, appreciate your work reviewing it. And. Yeah, Amy, is there anything else that I missed?
No, I think that's all of it.
Okay.
So I guess I'll just say Commissioner Grant was the chair of the subcommittee and the meetings involved HR, Prosecutor Scott Cushing, and Leonard and Amy.
And Maria participated too. Said Amy.
Oh, okay, sorry.
HR, she said HR.
I said HR.
Okay, sorry, I missed that.
Yeah, well, and, you know, as, I'll jump in and just say that, I mean, I don't think there's a ton to say. I think that we went through and reformatted, I mean, ultimately just kind of changed the wording so that it aligned with, let's see if I can, so that, so that it just looked a little cleaner. I wanted to say thank you to Ashley because there was a couple, and Carolina who had to kind of fill in for me because I had all this stuff going on with Cooper. And then, you know, ultimately it's, we went through and cut it all up and we need to make a decision on whether or not we are happy with the new version. I mean, I don't know that we need to go back through it all, that's what the subcommittee did. The version that is, that doesn't, I don't see a copy of this without the edits in here. So I don't know if it's possible to go through and just review that it is the document as it is so that we can decide if we're going to move forward or is that, is that something that we're planning to do? I'm not sure.
I think, so we also have the comments from Commissioner Mensah and Commissioner Klaus. I don't know if there's any desire for you to elaborate or to talk through your comments.
Can I add, just really quickly? So I guess I'll just add, so towards the end, on the, there was, it was one of the meetings where, it was the last meeting and Commissioner Grant was unable to be there. And it was in reference to the indemnification. And we heard from Scott at that meeting. And Scott's advice was to remove that language so we could continue to work on it. This language was taken from the state legislative Code of Conduct. But he wanted to add a couple, a little bit more measures. And Commissioner Mensah, you kind of touched a little bit on, on your comments on that piece. So after receiving that advice, like, I did agree with him that we could remove it and, and continue to work on it. However, just because it was only me at that meeting, I just didn't feel like I could just scratch off a language without having, you know, Commissioner Grant there or not having it discuss this with her or her having heard Scott's advice. So, you know, I kind of just let the subcommittee know that, you know, to leave the language and then we could have a board discussion on it and, you know, kind of bring that to the board's attention. That, you know, I, I was in agreement with Scott's comments. I just could not, I did not feel comfortable just being one member striking out language without having a board discussion on it.
I just like, you know, reading Ty's comment, number seven, you just, you just can't do it, right? You know, like, so on the, on the confidentiality expectations, I understand that a breach of security or confidentiality may be grounds for disciplinary action. What does that look like for a commissioner? It doesn't look like anything for a commissioner. And which, which may include termination of employment? You can't, you can't terminate a commissioner. So like, the whole statement in number seven is kind of pointless.
Yeah, and I think that was feedback that we got from, I think we had.
Yeah, Ty, that's in, that's in Commissioner Mensah's comments, but I just, it, it, it needs, you know, that, that should be reflected in the final product. And just like any of these, these, it's, these are, these are simple agreements that have no, really have no teeth outside of the, you know, the commission taking an act of, of doing public censure, voter no confidence, which that is also just a symbolic gesture. So, you know, these are just, these are expectations.
No, I mean, I would, I'm so sorry, I'm trying to get myself.
That's okay.
Trying to get myself allocated. So what I do, I think what we do need to talk about is, is kind of what Carolina was just talking about, the, the final thing. Now that I've had a chance to kind of review some of this, you know, essentially the, what happened, we worked on editing these, these first ones, but there was additional discussion that went on where we added, and I, and I don't know, I actually don't know where the remedial action section came from. It didn't come from, the beginning of it didn't come, but I came back and edited some of it. But the, the, you know, what we, what we really talked about is what is this document? What do we want to use it for? If it's just a piece of paper, then we shouldn't, what, why would we spend all this time doing this, you know? I mean, what, what, what we, what? You, you want to go or you want me to go?
Well, I wasn't sure if you were stopping one thought and going into the next one because I would, I would, you know, I would reply to the one thought before we get the next one because then I would be having to go back five thoughts, you know what I'm saying? But it, it, it is, I was comfortable how it was, with how it was. You know, we, you know, there's some cleanup with how it is now, but like, it truly is just an agreement. Like there, as we all understand, we are, we are duly elected and the only thing that can be done, you know, is, is through a recall or through a vote. So beyond that, these are collective, like, agreements that we have with each other. And these are expectations that we lay out. But there are no disciplinary actions that you can be subjected to that you don't agree with yourself. You know, like, you know, even the, you know, you can say mandatory ethics training, but if we all say Ty needs to go to ethics training, he can say, okay, noted. Now I'm going to do, I'm going to keep going on and doing what Ty does. There's no, there is no way you can require anybody to do anything outside of what they agree to.
Thank you. And so, so thank you for those points, Commissioner Fournier. And so I just want to add that the Commissioner Klaus's and Commissioner Mensah's comments were not reviewed at any subcommittee meeting. So that's why they were not included in the formats because they were going to be discussed in this meeting. So, yeah, so that's why basically what you're seeing in terms of the document provided is just a document that just came from the subcommittee. And then that was our last day for meeting and we just agreed that the next meeting, right? We would just review all the comments and it would be a board discussion based on whatever everyone was comfortable with. So that's why you're not seeing any of the changes or questions suggested into the actual, the draft one. uh, one that came from the subcommittee. Um, so if you wanna talk about remedial actions, I'm kind of, I'm happy to discuss that further because that was one of the items that I added on and it was actually from the King County's Code of Conduct uh, with the, uh, actually state legislative code of conduct as well. So compare the two of those and that was, uh, the language that I included on there was from basically kind of similar language that both of those, uh, both King County and both the state legislative, legislator has in terms of remedial actions. And actually, the state legislator has this whole section just on remedial actions. So, um, that's kind of where that section came from. And, uh, you know, I understand that everyone here is, is duly elected. Um, but I think there also needs to be kind of an awareness of, sure, yes, this is just, you know, expectations that we have of, of each other. But it also gives the board some tools if there is something to happen that, there are measures. And I'm happy to keep discussing what the measures are, if there is concerns about some pieces, to expand further on that. But, uh, just wanted to clarify that, that is already in some county's code of conduct. It wasn't just brought out of thin air. Um, and, uh, also, it's also on the state legislative, legislative code of conduct.
So can I clarify, um, under remedial action, there's a paragraph. I'm in the code of conduct.
Yeah.
That second page. It says remedial action. There's a paragraph there.
These are the two that we're looking at passing, right?
No, those are the old.
They're the previous ones.
Oh, those are the ones that were revised.
I like those ones.
These red line, blue li-, the ones with the blue lines are the subcommittee's changes. So.
Yeah, so, oh yeah, go ahead, Ty.
Just finish. So I, I, I'm, I'm just trying to clarify what we're looking at. So remedial action, there's a paragraph, which I think that could be very gently wordsmithed to be something that I could be fine with. And then, then there's Commissioner Grant's suggested language and there's like three more paragraphs. And then there's the thing about indemnification. So I'm looking at Commissioner Mejia. When you say you took stuff from King County and legislative, that's just that first paragraph?
Yes.
Not the italicized Commissioner Grant suggestions. So I would, in my opinion, if, if we just stuck with what you had and we just softened it a touch, like by saying, you know, conduct will be, violations will be addressed promptly and with appropriate actions. Remedial actions, uh, include but not limited to, you know, recommendations for counseling, training, or other corrective action, and which may include reprimand, censure, we, you know, that we can do. Uh, removal from committee, yeah, that we can do. Final action will be taken. So like, basically with just a, a recommendation, um, for counseling, training, or other corrective action, because I think Commissioner Fournier is right, we can't actually make that happen. Um, you might actually put in one word, like, with appropriate, the first sentence, appropriate. Appropriate kind of covers it, but I'd almost add appropriate remedial action, um, that is available.
That is available?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I was just gonna clarify that I don't think I put that language in there. Maybe I did, I don't know, but, but, um.
I would just stick.
I don't care what we do. I don't care what we do at this point. I'm like, just, uh, make a decision. I thought we were coming here honestly today to, um, we've already kind of gone through this so many times that I am perfectly fine with whatever everyone wants to suggest. Uh, and, and incorporating, you know, in these last little pieces. And then I would really just like us to get a final version and, and get it approved. Um, because, I mean, I think that it's absolutely fine just leaving just the beginning and the end. If you wanna do that, that sounds good to me.
That would cover that big piece of my concern. My second major concern that I would, I guess I'll look to you, Commissioner Grant. We have this reference addendum.
Yeah.
It's actually attached to both, both. And it says the following legal and ethical standards provide the foundation for governance, transparency, confidential, and professional conduct in Thurston County government. Compliance with these standards ensures public officials fulfill their, there's like thirty policies and some of them actually refer to other policies, so there's potentially forty or fifty policies here. If I'm signing a document that, making myself responsible for these forty or fifty laws, policies, like, I'm not comfortable with that, like.
So just remove that?
Either remove it or make it, or make it clear that this is, like, maybe if you, if you were to s- if you were to remove it a level from the policy and to say, HR, in, you know, in interpreting this, these are standards that are looked to as foundate, you know, like, okay, this is the backdrop, but like, I want it to be really clear that the, the person that signs this, which is, or, or votes for this, like the five commissioners, I'm not necessarily saying that I know what the Graham Leach Billy Act is. If that's what I'm saying, and I want pa- posting attorney to come in here and walk us through each one of these policies, line by line, so I understand what I am saying that I'm in compliance with. That just made me really uncomfortable to have this encyclopedia embedded in the policy.
Yeah.
Well, so I wanna make, make sure that, you know, I think the exact opposite. So, um, you know, that, that I'm okay with paring this down, but every other person, eh, you know, these are all the things that when it comes down to, uh, like, being sued or suing someone else that a lawyer is gonna look to, these are the things that they would go through, one by one. And we are held accountable to all of these things. And, and the reason putting them together essentially is saying, hey, everybody, you know, these are the things you'd be held accountable to or you could be recalled on. And, you know, I, I, you know, I mean, maybe you don't, I don't know what the Graham Leach Billy Act, you know, is too, but it is actually something that's listed in MRSC, you know, MRSC as something that we are held to, right? But I wanna be really clear about the, the, the one on the back page that says local Thurston County policies and govern-, governance standards, they're all over the place online. They're like in six different places, listed twice, list two different policies. These ones are things that we, they're, these are all the different policies that all of the other employees in Thurston County are held to. And I think that we need to have them in one place so that we are also held accountable because this is an outward facing document. And that people need to be able to look at this and say, the commissioners are taking this seriously. They, they are holding themselves to account and they are holding themselves to, you know, these policies and making policies widely available and easy to review when somebody new comes on. That, that was the point of this. Um, you know, and the ethics and standards are also something that we're held to, um, you know.
I'm with you on the Thurston County stuff and I, I think maybe, maybe you, maybe we could word the preamble, the little preamble paragraph just slightly differently so it, it postures them in a different way. I just don't want them to be like elements, like direct elements of this policy. To say that these are other, you know, potentially relevant guidelines that public may wanna refer to and assessing, you know, Thurston County's, you know. I, I mean, I, I could probably draft a little paragraph at the top that kind of makes me more comfortable than the way it's, the way it's drafted there.
Well, like, just the first, governance and collection, maintenance, and dissemination of personnel by federal agencies. We're not a federal agency. So, you know, are we s-, are we saying we're subjected to these federal agencies' rules?
The Privacy Act of seventy-four, I mean, I don't, I don't know. I've never had training on that one. I can tell you for a fact.
Right, I know, that's a concern.
Safeguard the privacy of student education records? How is that a, I mean, student edu-, we're not a school.
Okay, well, I, I don't wanna go, I mean, you, you guys can go ahead and I know at this point that I am accountable to all of these different kinds of things. And so this is what is a list of things that, that I got from other places, like from WASAC and, and the different, the different ones. And so I, it's totally fine with me if you guys want to pare this down. My point is, is that we're, we're at the point, like, we probably should've had you come on the subcommittee because now the subcommittee did the work and then they came here. So, so all I'm asking is for us to go back away from this for Ty, for you to incorporate your, if you want us to send you this document and you wanna incorporate the changes, just incorporate the rate them right into the document. And the only thing that I think we really need to talk about here is whether or not, is, is how we're gonna pare down that last little bit, the confident, or the, the part that says remedial action. And, because I think that what I saw on Commissioner Klaus's thing was that she had some concerns about it. And so that conversation, the rest is all just edits. Right? We can do that.
I'm gonna turn to Commissioner Klaus because she had a bunch of stuff we haven't talked about yet.
Yeah, no, no worries. Um, I wanna just say I, as far as the stuff we're talking about with the references in the back, um, one thing Commissioner Grant said that I wanna highlight that I agree with is that the policies we have should be publicly available. And the policies that we allow to be publicly available should be up to date so that if someone's looking at it, it's in alignment with what we're, what we've signed and what we're doing. So that was one thing I thought stood out to me. As far as paring down the references, um, I do agree with Commissioner Grant and Commissioner Mensah about like the Thurston County policies and governance standards being in there. That makes a lot of sense. Um, for the rest of them, Commissioner Grant, you mentioned like you're finding them from WASAC and MRSC. And when you say that to me, I hear, you know, I agree with the fact that you're thinking along the lines of us taking policies from guidelines that we've already established that we follow. We are all part of WASAC. We all should be following their requirements. And MRSC, um, I believe we should also be including things, you know, saying that we adhere to those. And we should be educated on those because that's what people look to, including ourselves, when we have a question. So WASAC and MRSC, they have a direct connection to us and that makes sense. So if we were gonna pare this down, I would say, I would agree with, uh, continuing to include, like, anything that's from a, an organization that we already have, you know, collectively aligned with. So that's just on the reference part. Um, and then I guess before I go over to my feedback, does, do you, does anyone wanna say anything about that? Those thoughts? Or like, do, should we come to a conclusion on what to do with the references?
You mean the addendum?
Any other thoughts about the addendum?
I, for simplicity's sake, just not attaching it would, I mean, we're all subject to the things that,
Yeah.
So the Public Records Act, yeah, we, we're all subject to that. Uh, Help Insurance, Portability, and Accountability Act, I don't know. I don't, but, and, and so like. And so like, including that.
I can hold you accountable. So that, that's what I'm saying is that if we list out, like, the problem that we got into, the risk and the fact that we had to pay something out is because we did not have something listed that said, here are the rules that, that we are holding ourselves accountable to.
I don't think that's what happened.
So if we go back and we act, well, I mean.
I mean, that's, that's, yeah, that's not.
I'm stating that this is something that happened, you know, anyway, that's the experience I have.
Yeah.
Is that this is what clears it up.
Yeah, we, we're.
We say, I don't know. It's weird to me that you guys wouldn't want to hold yourselves accountable to.
That's not what anyone's saying. We, like, nobody's saying we don't wanna hold ourselves accountable. What, what I am saying is, yeah, we, we are, we are subject to certain things on this list. And then there's other things that are on this list that I don't know where they came from or if they even apply to us, like the, you know, the Federal Trade Commission Act. Just related to, I mean, I, I, the FT, you know, like, I don't, or, or, I don't, I know the things that are applicable, that I've gone through training on, through, you know, various, you know, what, what have yous. But, you know, some of these things just seem like curveballs and I'm saying, like, I don't, I don't wanna s-, I don't wanna put in a document that we're subject to the National Oceanic, you know, or, you know, NASA's, uh, you know, rules on rocketry when it doesn't really, it doesn't really a- apply to us. And the things that we are subject to, they already exist and we're held accountable to. The OPMAs, we, whether that's in this document or not, we're held accountable to it. But adding things like NASA's, uh, you know, rules on rocketry, adding that might not make sense to us.
That's, is that in here?
So can we just figure out?
There are things, I, what I, I'm just using that example because there's clearly things in here that don't.
Why are you yelling?
Because I want her to hear me.
She can hear you, just fine, I'm sure.
Because there's, because there's things in here that don't necessarily make sense or apply to us and I don't, I don't know how to vet this list.
Well, I will say, like, one thing that's on here that no one has disagreed with is maintaining professional working relationships and communicating with professionalism. And I don't think that screaming or yelling or interrupting or, you know, adding dramatic additions to a list that doesn't actually include NASA's rocketry. You know, it's, it's disrespectful because Commissioner Grant has put a lot of thought into the things she's.
A lot of work, a lot of work. I went and researched every single one of these.
You didn't submit any email feedback that I saw, but you have so much to say now that you're yelling.
Should I not talk?
Well, you're yelling, I think.
Because we're all here to talk, right?
But we're not here to interrupt each other. And you've interrupted Commissioner Grant a number of times. And she was on the subcommittee, so I think she should have the floor a little bit more than what you're giving. I'd like to hear her thoughts without her getting interrupted. So, and I think because we're on the record, it's important to not like, you know, add things that aren't on the list because NASA's rocketry stuff, it's not on here. And like, we're on the record, so people are gonna be listening and being sarcastic like that is disrespectful, so.
Commissioner Grant, will you take, you're computer.
For me, for me, yeah, for me, it's just, I just wanna know what, what are the next steps? What are next steps?
As far as.
Anybody have any suggestions for that?
I have a suggestion for the addendum. If we could hear, whether it's from you, Commissioner Grant, or I, I think it would be best coming from you. Um, but like, I would be interested in keeping an addendum that has the Thurston County governance standards. I think that's appropriate. And I think any other standards that come from county level guidelines, like MRSC and WASAC, would also be appropriate. That's what I think. I'd be comfortable with keeping those things on there.
I just wanna say that MRSC doesn't, they're, they're an advisory group.
But they have good advice.
Yeah, I know, they, and, and so what they would do is they would say, hey, here's what other counties do. They don't say, here's what we think you should do. They, they would say, here's kind of an advice on best practices.
Yeah, and do you not agree with those best practices?
That's not at all what I said.
I'm, that's what I was asking.
Now you're interrupting me.
We're having a conversation.
Okay, so MRSC doesn't say Thurston County, thou shalt do these things.
Right.
They say, yeah, you can put out some ethics guidelines and here's what Spokane does. Here's what Clark County does.
Right.
Here's what Clackamas County does. So you can't put in here a thing that's taken off their website that says the addendum and reference what those other counties have done.
Well, okay.
That's what I'm saying. So like, when you say, you say other county level organizations, I understand what you're saying, but that doesn't necessarily translate into something practical.
Okay, well, I see what you're saying. So it, like, the format of taking from other agencies that already have guidelines in place, I've seen it done here in this document two different ways. Like Commissioner Mejia referenced taking guidelines from the state legislature and their remedial action section.
And King County.
And, yeah, right, exactly. So other sources have been used, um, in this document and we're not necessarily saying we're taking it from them because they're saying we must do it. We're saying Commissioner Mejia did research and took something that seemed appropriate.
I'm purely talking about the addendum.
I know, so I'm, I'm.
Well, I, I am happy, look, I'm sorry to just interrupt you. I know we only have three minutes left and I'm just gonna say that I am happy to remove, uh, any of the things that are, you know, not extremely important. Um, or, you know, like, if, if most of these federal laws and regulations could be removed, but the Washington State laws, the Thurston County laws, and the ethical laws are all laws that I believe that we should be holding ourselves in account to. Cybersecurity and it's what we're telling our employees, they're just listed everywhere. I, I pulled, I went through and painstakingly walked through every single policy wing and looked in them and then pulled the, the wax out of them, if they were referenced, and put them in our document. Like, that's what I'm trying to say is that we have these listed all over the place in HR policies. We've already agreed to them. We've already signed little things at the bottom of them when we did our training. We did it in NEO, we did it, you know, but we're just doing them all over the place. And this is one centralized place. It's a pool document. It's like, and it's clickable. So like, if you are ever like, hey, what are we supposed to do again? Then you go click on this document and the link is in there and you're like, oh, yeah, this is that thing that Rachel was talking about twen-, you know, ten years ago or whatever. But if you'd like me to get rid of some of the, you know, to pare it down, something like that, then that's totally fine. I can do that. But we just need to make a decision.
Yeah.
And so that we can get to a final one.
What I heard Commissioner Klaus proposing was a way of paring it down.
Yeah.
Just by using things that are only referenced at MRCN or WASAC plus county policies, is that what you're saying?
Right, yeah, any, you know, if it's.
Versus wherever else Commissioner Grant got some of these things from.
Right, I mean, some of them.
Thurston County, yeah.
If Commissioner Grant is willing to pare it down a little bit and, and figure out which ones we have already agreed to, like a NEO or wh-, you know, whatever, um, I think that'd be great.
I would just.
Yeah, I have no problem doing that.
I would personally just like to strike the second subs- sentence and the preamble. Just so it's not clear that, just so it's clear that. Just so it's not clear that, just so it's clear that, you know, our. We didn't go through training necessarily or we're not, like Wayne said, we're not necessarily, we're not, we're not, we're not admitting. That we're necessarily, that it's relevant to us per se. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't, maybe it's relevant to someone else. But I thought these policies were, were for the commissioners specifically, not for countywide stuff. Is that correct?
They're just, they're just laws that apply to anyone who's a public official. Or public servants. Um, so I, the only other thing I really needed to know was you. Ty had gone through and you said we're gonna cut out the middle of the remedial action and enforcement section, right? The. The part that's italicized.
That was my suggestion and I.
I agree with that.
Keep the part that, um, Commissioner Mejia had that was not italicized, that she said came from the other policies. County manager?
I just wanted to clarify that there are things in here that are not part of, um, personnel policies. Um, and some things that may apply to employees just based on the nature of their position, so. Not every county employee would, uh, have requirements under HIPAA.
But we do, we as commissioners would be, you know, if we're working within like.
We don't have patience. You, you never, you don't have a patient relationship with anybody at the county. So you shouldn't have any private health information on anyone at the, I would think. No, 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 you don't. As Commissioner Grant, you have no, you should have no private healthcare information on anybody.
I do, in my role.
I do too, so I'm just saying, that's wrong, but we sign the bottom of these vouchers with people's personal names on them that we pay their bills on. And so that's HIPAA.
Uh, Maria, please, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, it would be position specific, so. You know, this appears that it applies to all five commissioners. It. In some cases would not, or the Washington State Ethics and Public Service, that applies to Washington State employees. There's a different RCW that applies to local government. So, I just wanted to clarify that not all of this would be rooted in personnel policies. And there may be certain things that only apply to, uh, an employee based on the nature of their position.
So, I, and.
But this isn't going to employees again, this is going to the commissioners' rooms. And so I'm happy.
Can you hold on, I had Commissioner Fornier at the floor. So, I, I'm, I'm to understand that the subcommittee's work is finished. And they have presented us with this information. Is that, and I think the next move is whatever document's been provided for us to have any further discussion. There needs to be another lens or two that it's gone through and that would be a legal review, an independent legal review. And a review by HR, I would think, because there are probably, you know. Their, their professional tasks need to be done.
They've already, they both were on the subcommittee.
Well, there, there, there's, there's sitting as a group on the subcommittee and then there's sitting down. As the county's attorney, not as a member of the subcommittee and looking at it independently, free of, uh, you know. Interference from elected officials or other people. They've got a, the subcommittee does this job, in my opinion, and then legal has to do a legal review. I don't think sitting on the subcommittee is necessarily legal review of a document. Because the subcommittee could have had an opinion that was completely in, in opposition to that one legal member on the committee. And at the end of the day, their opinion.
So what, so what, so what do we wanna do next? What's the next step? So we, would you guys like me to incorporate all of those things and then give it back and then send it to legal and HR? Is that what we're saying? Or, what, what are we saying?
That sounds good to me.
Commissioner Klaus, I would like to know, is there.
Totally fine, that's good.
Is there anything else, before we talk about that, can we, is there anything else that you? Had in your comments that you feel needs to be addressed by the group?
Um, let's see. I don't think so, but let me just double check.
Given what we've already discussed.
Cause a lot of, so I mean, honestly, not, not really, because a lot of the stuff I had in my comments. Um, was taken care of like when I read your comments. It, like, the questions that I asked in my comments. Got into the weeds of how do we enforce all of this stuff, but if we're striking. The italicized section of the remedial action.
That covers your concern.
I think it would cover my concerns.
Okay, so then let's go to Commissioner Grant's question of how to proceed forward given this discussion. Commissioner Klaus?
One more thing, so the first page of the Code of Conduct, you had some comments on there and I put checkmarks by all your comments, I thought. You know, there were parts about like redundancy in paragraph nine and stuff like that, and I agreed with everything you said there.
A lot of it was just grammar, but. I had one substantive comment where, on paragraph three where it says, maintain professional working relations with staff and colleagues. I thought we should add both in and out outside the workplace. Just.
Sounds, sounds good.
Kind of broadening the scope of this.
And I noticed when you read the, um, paragraph of remedial action before the italicize. I don't know if this was intentional, but I wanted to ask, you read the sentence out loud, but one thing you skipped was limitations on staff access. And I wanted to know, is, was that intentional or were you just reading fast? Do you have any concerns with? Um, putting remedial action including limitations on staff access?
Well, I would say that. I didn't wanna go outside of like actual powers we don't have. That, I think, I would be, I would be very, very reluctant to ever impose that, but I. I was thinking, well, I guess it is something we probably could do, so it's, it could be on the list, I mean.
We're on the remedial action of paragraph.
And that's, I mean, you did say if we gently wordsmith that, you'd be okay with it, so maybe in the, in that process.
Yeah, I was letting that go because, like I said, even though I would be, I would be, I would not impose that very lightly or very often. I, I, I mean, I guess, I was just trying to make sure we weren't saying that we had a power we didn't have.
That's kinda, I have that concern too, and it does, it does kinda get into one of the questions I had on mine, which is like. How is this enforced? Is it administrative or is it board action? Like, how would we? I mean, or we could just take it out if we have questions about it, but.
There's nothing that can, there's nothing administratively, like, you know, you had good questions. Like, when, when I see, does remedial action require a DOCC vote? I mean, there, there's really no remedial action that can be required. But. If anything's gonna be done, it has to be through, you know, the, the, the administrator can't censure.
No, not censure, but like, like in the past, we had the county manager kind of, you know, take some action to make sure that. Staff were protected and everyone was kinda like siloed for a little bit to make sure that the investigation, we're just talking one situation.
But that was through board action. Board action was given to direct the county manager, not, and there's a difference between independent. Like, action and board action. When I hear you say, so I'm not trying to cut you off. But when I, when I read, uh, administratively, that makes me think independent action by the administration. That's not, that never occurred and that's not what can occur. It has to be board direction given. There's no way around that.
I mean.
Which is interpretation I think you would agree with, right?
I would agree with that, yeah, but I mean, sometimes board action is not entirely clear, like if we're.
We're working on that.
Right, we're working on that, but it's not completely like ironed out. Sometimes we do have unclear direction. Um, so, and that could put the county manager in a situation where he's doing his best to follow direction, but maybe. Maybe it's something happens that we didn't intend because our motion doesn't include every single thing that he could possibly do. And so there can be some confusion sometimes.
My opinion, he has to have a little latitude and he gets to come back, you know, if he feels. He didn't get quite clear enough direction and something falls in a gray area, he should come back to the board and clarify. He has to do that and if we.
Just one more thing, um, I think if we're gonna, I mean, the county manager should have discretion sometimes when it comes to personnel stuff. Including limitations on staff access in a remedial action section that's addressed to the board of county commissioners, I think I'm not super comfortable with. Because this is for the board of county commissioners and we can't impose limitations on staff access.
What do you mean? Staff, staff work through the county manager, not through us.
Exactly, that's why I think this part shouldn't be included in our, in our document.
County manager, go ahead.
Oh, just to add to your comment, um, it's, it's also an opportunity for commissioners to say. Hey, we gave this direction, it's working out this way, do we need clarity?
It's a, go either way.
It's a partnership, yeah.
And you've, and you have, Commissioner Klaus come forward and said, is this what the board meant? Like, you know.
Providing clarification without having a serial meeting means we have to have a formal meeting and sometimes clarification can become really convoluted, so. I know we're working on making it better, but.
Okay, so there's a question, I mean, that's fine, like, we can just sort of flag that as a ques, as an open question. Um, I guess the question next. Commissioner Mejia, that I, are you still on the queue?
Thank you. Um, so I was just going to recommend next steps. I was going to recommend that, um. We allow more time for comment from commissioners, Commissioner Fornier. I heard some, several comments from you, so, um, and I think that. As a board member, they, they are valid, right? That was the point of us working on it and then coming back to the board was. For everyone to have input on, on what you're going to be signing, so. You know, I heard some of your comments, but if, if we can just get them and then my recommendation would be. Um, to send them over to, to Scott directly, right? Just the commissioner's comments and questions and. Uh, then maybe he can, um, come up with a product. I just want to be sure that. You know. I don't think it should be just one commissioner doing this. I think that it should go. Um, whatever comments we have should go through the hands of legal and. Um, even though they were involved in the meetings, right? Like, but if there are comments now that it's come to the full board. Um, trying to integrate those comments, I, I think it should either go to more of an independent piece.
And I, I wanna, I appreciate the subcommittee's work and I, and I, you know, I thank them for what they've done, but. I, it is important that it's, it, you know, the, it would be clear that the subcommittee is done. And if the subcommittee is done, then their, you know, their work on this is done and then it goes, it goes into a staff. Phase. And so when we get together as a whole and we all are trying to build consensus and we've got. Tweaks and suggestions, that work should be done independent of, of any one of us. And, and then it comes back from, you know, say the clerk or Scott as was suggested and then, and then we would. I guess finalize once it's been, there's additional steps.
Commissioner Grant, is that? Reason for next step from your perspective?
Totally fine. I, I mean, it's totally fine. I, you know, I do wanna just say out loud that. I'm not sure that I understand the point of subcommittees. If, if, you know, I mean, I think, I think we need to, as a group reconsider. Kind of, you know, do we trust each other to go off to do something and come back and give suggestions? Because, you know, I think that that's a part of working together and being. Um, you know, a group that we, we really need to be able to say, if we send a subcommittee to do something and come back, that. We, we, you know, will have a few edits and, and a few different things. But, um, you know, that we should be respecting, you know, the work of the subcommittee. Cause and I, I didn't really get to attend the subcommittee very much and so, um, and then that was, you know, on me for my, my son being sick. But, you know, they did a lot of work, I know Taylor and, and Ashley, and I appreciate that and. But I just want us to be thinking about in the future, you know, is, should we just be doing it in our meetings?
Can I just say that? I wanna respond to that because. I read the policy as I try to do anytime we have an exercise like this, which is difficult, as like. I didn't wordsmith anything, I mean, I respect, in my opinion, I respected the subcommittee's work, I mean. I only, I only flagged something that I had a, you know, kind of a concern about.
Yeah, you did a good job.
Otherwise, I left it completely worded the way you worded it. I didn't get in, you know, I mean. Just making sure the word judgment is spelled consistently. I know there's two ways to spell judgment. I mean, I hope that's not offensive, but. I was just trying to, um, just flag things that I thought substantively I was, had a question about, but I. But to me, the subcommittee, like, we wouldn't even be in this conversation without the work of the subcommittee. Um, so I, I don't want you to feel like it was not worthwhile because, like I said, I had something to work from and then. I was able to make my point by point comments because I had a template that you guys had, had advanced beyond where we were before, so. Um, I, I think that, um. You know, I think that, even though you're focusing on maybe three or four things I'm raising, but I, I would say there's. Uh, probably, you know, fifty things in here I didn't touch and I think then none of us have commented on and so we're, we're that much closer to a product.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be honest with you guys, I didn't realize, I mean, I kinda came to this thinking that we were about to go over a final, a final. Product, thinking that maybe our, you know, and I didn't realize that. And that's just on me, um, not coming back to it so that there was additional, you know, um, edits that needed to be made in the document. I didn't know that. I probably would have done that before we came to this meeting. Um, so then we would have had them incorporated and then we would only had a few things, but I wanna make sure that next time, like with the addendum. That we, you know, just, um, be very clear that, you know, I probably could have done that before we got here if. I would have been really clear on the major concerns. Go for it.
This, this, this is the work. It's, and it's okay, right? There's, you know, I, I also didn't. Wordsmith anything. I appreciate the work's done, but then, but there's probably very rarely going to be a case where. A subcommittee comes in and says, alright, pass it as it is. It just, things don't work that way. There's always gonna be an additional layer. There's always gonna be a further legal review until they, you know, they get to have a final say. You know, so it's, you know.
Legal review is great.
Yeah, yeah, and, and so it's, it's, it's okay, you know, there was a lot of great work that was done. Now we just. Push it along to the next phase and, you know, I think, I think Commissioner Mensers', uh, suggestions were great. I think. Commissioner Klaus had some good questions and.
Alright, alright, let's get her done then.
Perfect, consensus on Commissioner Mejia's suggestion. Uh, there's still thirteen minutes left for.
So can we just clarify, we're gonna take the comments we received, the discussion today. Gonna send those to Scott and ask him to synthesize everything?
With addition, I think Commissioner Mejia called for like any additional comment, like from, like, I might, I might clarify after this discussion. Like, I might refine my comment page because, because I could, I could say kind of. The remedial piece, you know, I think I was okay with the top part of it. Um, Commissioner Fornier might wanna type something out that he thought of today or not, but.
So my recommendation is, I don't believe Scott will do that work. I think you should send it to the clerk. Let the clerk take all your comments, put them together and then, cause Scott will ask, what do you want me to legally review? I don't think it's fair to ask him to put that.
Clerical.
Right, so I would suggest just a modification, if that's okay, Commissioner Mejia, send to the clerk and then the clerk will work. To send it to Scott to get an overall legal review and comment, so that then we can get that back to the full board.
Give us a week maybe to do that?
I had a real quick, go, right, I'll go like this. Does legal review qualify as HR's review as well? I think HR has perspective that needs to be included in.
Yeah, but, I mean, if that's the commissioner's desire. Looking for direction.
I mean, I.
Absolutely.
I think, they, I mean, I have no problem with that, but I was gonna say, I think that we don't need to necessarily take any more of HR's time. She already spent quite a bit of time in the subcommittee, um, as we move towards, I just worry that, you know, she's got a lot to do. Um, but I don't care. I need to know really quick, did you, so Wayne, do you wanna go through? Do you guys want me to go through the, the, the end thing or the addendum? Or do you want to go through and say, strike this, strike that, strike this? Cause on my end. Those weren't my suggestions, so I'm not gonna be the one sending them out and so I wanna make sure that someone's doing that.
I think the suggestion that was made was that it go to the clerk and anything that doesn't, isn't, uh, taken from county policy. That, that's what I think, but we got.
Yeah, no, I was just going to add, like, you know. Thankful to Commissioner Grant for like offering to do that, but I know, like. This is a lot of work and she has.
Don't wanna do it, is what I'm saying, so.
She's already spent a lot of time and so that's why I was kinda looking for another avenue, right, uh, to kind of. Gather all the commissioner's comments that was independent of just an individual commissioner taking on this workload, so I, I wasn't discrediting. You know, your offer.
I think of what I'm trying to clarify though is that just make sure that, you know, I mean. I, we're, our suggestions have been all over the place, I couldn't keep up with them all, so that's why, I mean, like, I was trying to scribble them down, and I, I just want to make sure that each of us individually, whatever we talked about in this meeting, we go ahead and send that to Amy so there's no confusion, and so that she knows for clearly, like, these are the things we need to take off and these are the things we need to add. And, um, and she doesn't have to try to figure out, you know, one thing or another, so, so if there are, um, I'm just saying, if it was Wayne's suggestion to go in and remove all of the things, or Emily's, whose suggestion was it? And who's gonna go in and send direction to Amy that says, take these federal guidelines off, take this one off, take this one off, take this one off. Who's taking point on that?
So each individual commissioner is gonna be responsible to kind of sending in their comments or re-editing their comments based on today's conversation over to Amy, right, so Amy can kind of draft up, uh, a proposal on kind of, based on those comments uh, that we submit. Like, I know for me, like, you know, I was on the subcommittee, so I, I don't have strong feelings one way or another, um, but then I think if there are items, right, where, you know, for example, you, Commissioner Grant, say, I want to keep this, but someone else says, I want to remove this, right, at least it's highlighted, so then we can, at the next board meeting, it can just be like, these are the four points that we need to discuss.
Yeah, but, but I'm, I'm confused, cause what I thought you guys said was that, that we're, that we're gonna take, send everything to Amy, edit, and send it out to, to Scott for a last look.
Yeah.
That's what we just made a decision on, so what you just said is not, wait, like, can we get, I mean, we gotta get this kind of clear, you guys.
So I, I understand what you're saying about the addendum, cause the, with the way the comments were, I don't know if I were Amy, what I would do with all that.
Yeah.
So-
So-
What I would rather, I mean, to me, I have a different suggestion. It says, reference addendum to the Code of Conduct and Competence. If, if the goal here is just to have somewhere that people can go and click on these things, can it be divorced, can we have a place on the website or where that, these are just referenced as a reference addendum to something else, not to the Code of Conduct and Competence, like, if we just divorced them from the co, from the codes, but had them as a reference material-
Or reference, yeah.
Somewhere collected, that someone can read about these new things and decide for themselves where, who it applies to, I'm fine with that. Can we just get it, like, I would just like to get it out, cause I, I agree with, with, with Rachel that we're gonna have-
So it's gonna be posted on the website.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm fine with what you did, I just, I'm, my, my problem is with its connection and-
Yeah.
Yeah, incorporation within-
Signing something at the end, saying I'm subject to-
Code of Conduct for the Board of County Commissioners, so, yeah, I, I think-
But Wayne, that's the whole point, like, I, I, like, I'm, you guys, I'm just, I want to come back to this very clearly, that the point of this is to hold each other accountable to the rules and laws and ethics. So when you say, I don't want to sign my name on the bottom of something, and you're saying, that's the same as saying, I'm not gonna be held to account.
Of course not. No, 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 he's talking about the addendum and the things that may not exactly apply to all of us, and so signing you're subject to something that doesn't apply to you is probably not the best practice.
County manager, sorry.
But Ty, does that make sense that, wait, sorry?
I gotta get county manager in, he's waiting.
I, I just think that there's, there's a few in there that absolutely do, do not apply, like, uh, the-
Agreed.
So I think that, based on what I thought, although we, there was no direction given, Commissioner Klaus had the suggestion of just take out anything that doesn't apply to the county. Um, and isn't from laws I can amiracy, that takes care of some of the federal and the-
Sure.
Attorney and legal things that you, you guys aren't held accountable for. The reason I'm concerned about that is because I've seen in the, the last time, little while I've been here, there are gadflies that will take things out of context and say, you guys are supposed to do this, you're supposed to be held to this. And I think that could potentially open the door, but the direction, it seemed like everyone was agreed upon, was to make the addendum more focused.
I, I think Ty's suggestion is the simplest solution, and that's not attach that addendum. On the website somewhere, have that listed as references of, you know, things that may possibly apply to county business. That, is that, I mean, that's kind of what you're saying, like, that's too, you know, take that-
How does that help us though, in the, in the future, so if, if this happens again, how does that help us in an actual legal risk or battle?
If you're subject to those laws, you're already subject to those laws, whether you put that on there or not. Right, the Open Public Meetings Act, you don't need to put it in there, you're subject to that right now. But what you're not subject to is maybe the HIPAA rules, because you don't have a patient-
Right.
Relationship, so don't put that in there. And, and so the easy-
Well, but for example, I'm-
The easiest solution is to completely divorce those two things and have that as a reference list on the website, and then we can include everything that you put in on there. And then I, you know, then maybe like on a Sunday, I can get through and I can study those things as you put them on there from the website.
Sure, as long as we, and I think that's a good idea, as long as there's a sentence on ours that says, we are accountable to all of the laws and things written on the website. Because what I'm trying to say is, you know, there, there are times where, there have been several times where I've seen, um, someone not get any corrective action because, you know, it can't be proven that they, they were forced to read the policy.
There is no corrective action that you can do to any commissioner.
But, but, I know this, but we, but essentially, like, let's, you know, if there was, if we would have known for sure that someone read every, I would like, uh, my commissioners to know those laws. I would like you, this is an agreement between all of us, saying we're holding each other to these ethics and standards. I would like you, Wayne, to, to have clicked on that and read that ethics law and know that that's what you're being held to. That's my point, and, and I'm fine putting it on the, the website. And that's totally fine, but as long as we say, we have a reference in there that says, we are, you know, we will make an effort to understand the laws that are accountable to us. And it's a really nice, the thing is, is that when I came in as a new commissioner, like, I had to go find all these myself. So the next one that comes along, we're gonna have this ethics policy, they're gonna go along and we're gonna say, hey, new commissioner, guess what, this is a one-stop shop for you to get all that done. I mean, why waste all that work? You know, so it's like-
We have that already.
Yeah, right.
We have that, well, those things exist.
I'm just saying, Commissioner Grant, I, I, I just, we have a fundamental disagreement, because most of the things you have here are laws-
We can take off the ones that, that we just, that we talked about, I'm just saying the other ones.
Let me just make a philosophical point. Most of these are, the whole federal, all of them are, are, are US Code or CFR. If I read those laws, they're gonna go, I promise you, they're gonna go, subject to USC blah, 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 and subsections blah, 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 blah. I agree to the following. Now I've got a recent, you know, I'm a lawyer, so I understand how this works. Now I've got three rabbit holes I gotta go down to and read three other sec, so I'm not agreeing to anything that I don't have a specific training, if you want to insist on this approach, and I understand why you want it, but I'm not doing it until, unless we are agreeing that I want Prosecutoriality's office in here walking us through these statutes, so I understa, so I can read them and understand how they would apply to my work as a commissioner, and what it means I have to do and don't, don't do. This is far too broad for me to, to sign off on, whether I'm subject to them or not, if I haven't been trained on them, and I'm not gonna trust myself, and I have legal training, I'm not gonna trust myself to go off and read the Federal Trade Commission Act and make, and, and be confident I understand exactly how that applies to me. That is way too complex to ask of board members who don't have legal training, and unless we're gonna, we're gonna pair this effort with a comprehensive training on all of these rules and such, they should not be in here in the way that you've, that you've, that you put them, that's my point of view.
Well, I agree, I, Ty, I think we already established that, that we were gonna take some of those, those ones off, but the other ones that you've already been trained on?
Okay, well, but then who's gonna do, goes back to your original question. Who's gonna do, it's not Amy's job to figure out which ones of these apply to us, that's not, that's not her role in this, so we gotta figure out who's gonna do that, that was your original question.
I should, that's Scott.
I, well, I mean, you, I'm okay with completely divorcing the addendum from the Code of Conduct. And hanging, you know, those addendum items as references somewhere on the website and just for, for general knowledge. I, I, I think that sounds fair, and the things that you're subject to, they're, you're subject to them whether you like it or not.
County manager, any ideas on the addendum piece, how we might get to a-
I think we go back to Commissioner Klaus's suggestion, we'll strip out anything that we don't, or we'll redline it so you can see. And if anyone feels like, hey, you made a mistake, this one really does apply, we can have that individual conversation with commissioner, put it back in, and then note it when we come back, uh, after spring break and have the conversation with the full board.
All right, so, two weeks.
So, so can I just ask just a real, real brief wrap-up here that, um, so Leonard, you're saying that we're gonna send, if we have any edits, we're sending them to Amy, Amy's gonna make all of the adjustments, and then Amy will send it out as a draft, maybe to all of us, and then we-
Yes.
Final, a final look, and then you'll send it to Scott? For just the, the final, final look, is that kind of what we're talking about?
Well, we can, we can do, we can send it out to you all before we send it on to Scott. Um, we were just, I was gonna have Amy collect all the thoughts, put together and send it to Scott for a legal review, and then that come back for a-
It's fine.
That's okay.
Sounds, sounds good to me. Okay.
This is exactly how I died last time, I would imagine. It's over complicating.
It's not dying, yeah.
This is-
But it died.
All right, well, I think we've gotten as far as we can get today, it's two thirty. Everybody, I assume, needs to, I don't remember how long we had allotted for this meeting, an hour and a half, right?
So, I-
Oh, an hour.
I do, I need to, a commissioner's item that needs to be addressed, that's okay.
I don't have a hard stop.
So just based, I, and I, I do, I'm late for a meeting, but, um, just based on the conversation this morning and just from things that I've heard in terms of the requests that we're making both on the operational side, as well as the capital side for ITA, um, I think, one, it's a great opportunity, right, that, uh, very thankful for Senator Bateman kind of pushing this. But also, I kind of want their, appreciate Superior Court being proactive, but at the end of the day, whatever decision happens, either facilities or, you know, approve, approving for staff, like, that will come back to the board, and so I think that there needs to be someone on the executive team who is highly involved in all of that process. Um, and so I kind of want, would want, like, Leonard to be the point person for all those ITA conversations, especially as we're talking about a reduction in, in cost and all of that, I just, I think that, you know, the county manager is the appropriate person to kind of be the bringer together of, of all those conversations. So just kind of wanted to, to lay that out there. It's fast-moving, and that's why I kind of wanted to address it today, because it's being discussed and, uh, and it's something that, you know.
Any disagreement with that approach? I, Commissioner Meehan mentioned it to me, I think it's appropriate to have one per, there's so many springs to this, to make sure one person's just leading point on where we're going as a county.
Sure.
Keeping it focused.
It's fine, I mean, I understand, got it.
Okay.
It's totally fine.
Four thumbs.
Are we good?
Yeah. Thank you, Rachel, for sticking on it longer.
Yep.
All right. Then we're adjourned. County-